Okay, it's five thirty-one and we'll call the meeting to order. Does anybody have any revisions or additions to the agenda? No. Hearing none. And then forward with the approval of the minutes. The approval of the minutes is for the twenty-fifth twenty twenty-five meeting. So move. And Matt, you want a second? Okay, so we have a motion made by Aaron to approve the February twenty-fifth twenty twenty-five minutes as presented as written with a second by Matt. Kimma on favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. So we're gonna go right into the public hearing. The, the public hearing is about conditional use permit CUP twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, Waste Management Disposal Services of Oregon, Inc., applicant and owner. Their request is to allow an update and modification of an existing conditional use permit application from Waste Management Disposal Services of Oregon. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff report, public testimony in the following order. Applicant, any testimony in support of the application, any testimony opposing the application, any neutral testimony, the applicant's rebuttal, if any. Then we will close the public testimony. After the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the planning commission has a specific question. The planning commission may ask questions of staff, after which the planning commission will discuss the matter and make a decision. The planning commission may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may continue to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continued, this will be the only notice of what that time and date you will receive. I will recognize those people who wish to speak. Any questions should be addressed through me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium as the hearing is being recorded. Please keep testimony concise and to the point. Testimony should be on the action under consideration and address the substantive criteria. The, the criteria that apply to the decision are listed in the staff report. Testimony on other issues will be rejected and not considered by the planning commission. Failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission and the parties the ability to respond to the issue prohibits an appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. Similarly, failure to raise constitutional or other issues regarding any conditions of approval in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission to respond to the issue prohibits a lawsuit in circuit court on that basis. Now I ask the members of the planning commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. I have no conflict. I would like to state for the record that Paul Wilson, who is the district manager at Waste, Waste Management, is my stepson. However, it does not preclude me from making a decision based on the information we have here. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge a planning commissioner's impartiality? Hearing none. Planning Director Stephanie Case will now present the staff report.
Thank you, Chair. So what you have before you tonight is a review and modification of conditions for the approval of the conditional use permit issued to Waste Management Disposal Services for a solid waste landfill that is known as Columbia Ridge Landfill and Recycle Center. And given that we've been doing this for about a year now, I have been, I don't know how many of you were sitting on the, the commission at the last review. So I'm gonna give you just a brief history here. These project, the, these properties are the site of the existing landfill. The project dates back to about nineteen eighty-seven, when it was originally approved, and has received subsequent approvals since then, including a requirement in nineteen ninety-four that initiated this, basically a periodic review period, which is, put the conditional use permit under reviews every five years. This year, in the review process, the applicant coordinated with the county and we started to work to clearly define conditions of the permit and an attempt to bifurcate what are clearly land use conditions and then what would be subject to host fee agreement and the road maintenance agreement that are really more clearly under the purview of the county court versus the commission. So this host fee agreement, once it is developed and approved, would be reviewed and maintained by the county court. And then this conditional use permit would be an approval simply by the planning commission versus the process. Now we're both go in front of the county court. I listed out in the findings some of the prior approvals dating back nineteen eighty-seven, all the way through the second page. And then halfway through the third page of the findings that kind of provide the updates that have happened since then. And then in the middle of page three of the findings, you will find the substantive criteria for the land use portion of this, which include the applicable criteria in Article seven for reviewing and altering conditional use permits, and then standards governing conditional uses, and then section eleven, which talks about the conditions of approval and administrative provisions. As you will see in section seven point oh one oh, the authorization to grant or deny conditional uses is ceded with the planning commissioner, planning director, as defined in each of the, each of the standards listed within Article seven. And the one that is applicable to this would be a four, which is reviewing or altering conditional use permits. That grants the planning commission the authority to review these and alter as adequate. Really, everything's pretty straightforward. The applicant hasn't requested any changes based on their conditional use permit for their solid waste disposal facility. The only thing that they've asked for is that the language be modified, which would still maintain the hundred and fifty-foot buffer requirement, but it's just a slight language change. Really, the, the requirement itself wouldn't change. They haven't requested any changes in the rail and loading facility. And the modification to the conditions, as I've described, have been proposed. And staff would propose that we adopt the conditions as the applicant has presented. And I know it's a lot of information, so I will direct you. It's the last three pages of the attachments that have the watermark listed as draft.
I don't think I got one of those.
I guess it's three and a half pages.
Okay, and frankly, I was wondering how come, I was wondering why we didn't have that information, so.
It was a separate attachment, or a separate email.
Oh, open up every one of them. I opened every one of them.
The day that I sent them, I should have sent two emails, and then yesterday there was a modification. Yeah.
I found out the one that's not.
And the modification that was sent out yesterday, what they gave us was this, there was a, a slight language change in the memorandum, and then they added a site plan that had been missing from the original.
Right, I got that.
Yep.
Right there. And then. I got that one too. I did that. I didn't get anything new.
Well, it. It was really long.
I opened in twenty pages?
Uh, probably.
Yeah, well, that's, this is what I got. And I opened the second one.
Yep, so it should be.
But it doesn't have draft on it anywhere.
Staff, it's Carla. I'm attempting to open the document. If you can grant me share screen, if I can get to it, I can open it and share it on your screen.
That's a draft, although I do see some blue writing. That might be expected part of the revision portion of.
I'm gonna make you co-host. I think that'll give you the authority.
Okay.
Yeah, I wondered why, I, I mean, I was wondering, I, that was one of my questions is versus other information that.
Yeah.
Hey, can you see it on your screen?
Not yet. There it is. Yep.
Yeah, but we can't see it, so we're gonna need to move that. So are we just, are we? We go over there.
Let me attempt to enlarge it a bit. I will, can do that on this side. Here we go. Are you seeing my people? Cause I've got, or are you just seeing the document?
Yes, seeing the document.
Okay, perfect. So is that better? It's about as big as I can get on the screen.
That's okay. I'm gonna get out of the middle.
So most of their conditions is written are similar to what we had before, removing the, the conditions surrounding what would be host fee agreement or road maintenance agreement. The review timeline, of course, bumped out another five years. And the host fee and road maintenance agreement have been identified on this, but are just identified for reference purposes. The buffer, as I said, the language is slightly different. Previously, I can tell you, if you're, if you're interested what it said previously, but they've maintained the hundred and fifty-foot buffer on there. The disqualification for farm deferral is something that was a carryover from before, and it is a condition in the criteria for the conditional use permit standards. They did, uh, staff recommended that they slightly change the language for the transfer of ownership or assignment, so that way, instead of, instead of our authorization, they would notify us if there was any change in ownership with a written acknowledgement instead of asking for permission.
Not just the.
Yeah.
And then, um, so the communications portion kind of pulled together a few of the conditions from before and really cleaned them up, talking about creating an advisory committee meeting, which, as I understand, has been established, and then changing. Maybe they put that further down. There was, I think each of the advisory committees had different timelines for meeting, and they, they wanted to make it all standard, so that way, you know, the city of Arlington and Gillum County and those, they didn't have all different timelines. Where are we at? What's Carla got up there? Let's see, so.
Substance advisory.
Yep, and then so staff contact, this is a carryover from before that they published a notice in the newspaper of general circulation that identifies name and telephone number of somebody that they can contact in person at the landfill. And then a planning commission annual report was a carryover as well. They also provide a report to the county court, so I think it's, it duplicates that.
See that there's a date? Is that?
July thirty.
Yeah, July thirty-first.
Has that, but we don't have regular meetings, so maybe not appropriate, or?
No, that's the, uh.
The, the right.
Oh, I see what you're saying. The permit is a written report and site plan to the planning.
Yep, and that was a carryover, and I didn't realize that they had that requirement until we started conversing about this, so.
Does it necessarily matter if there's a written date, as long as it's annually?
I think that that would be up to the commission if you guys wanted to alter that.
Yeah, I think they'd be out of, they'd be out of compliance if they don't do it by July thirty-first.
It's kind of hard to do an annual report in July.
Yeah, yeah.
And kind of hard in October too, but I mean, July would be from.
Is that, is the end of the year, June thirtieth?
I'm guessing probably coincides with the fiscal year.
Yeah.
July. We didn't know where that came from either, but. Kind of the fiscal year.
Right.
So for clarity, they do provide a quarterly report to the county court. So that was one of the things that we had conversation about. We don't know where the July thirty-first date came from either, so, I mean.
I don't have a preference, but if there's anything.
Better if it was by a certain date that works for you guys. That way, we have a.
A hard.
Well, it's not hard, but it's, it's, we have a way to.
It's something to drive to.
I mean, if we felt like changing it to January first was more appropriate, I, you know, that's up to you guys, whatever.
Well, it was probably if the fiscal year is, is December thirty-first, they probably were thinking that then to not put everything right there to spread it out.
They were probably thinking just a middle-of-year type of thing.
Right, I would, I would bet.
That way they got more time to.
I have no reference, I just found it.
Well, and that is in the middle of harvest, so, you know, if we did June thirtieth.
Yeah.
I'm usually spring at midnight, it's kind of more named.
Right, right. So there's never a good time.
There's never a good time.
There's never a good.
No, it's not.
Um, so the visibility of the landfill, I'm trying to remember. Forgive me, I don't remember if we had any language changes in that portion. I, I'm not recalling any either, so. Uh, landfill operation and practices, some of this was pulling together some of the conditions from before, I think before our, our list of conditions and everything was like forty-four pages long. It was tremendous, and so it was kind of pulling together some of the language. There was some of it that was kind of duplicative, talking about some of their state required permits from DEQ and other agencies, some of that, so we cleaned it up and said, okay, well, how can we pull these under one? And then managing dust, odor, and litter generated by the permit's operations and permit's employees, agents, subcontractors. That is sort of new. What was stated before was that they control anything that during transport and those sorts of things. Staff didn't feel like that was something that we should be regulating, we should be regulating the site more than anything, and the host fee agreement should be more of the authority over any transport from point A to point B. Rail yard facilities.
I'm trying, there was one, I, well, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Cause I did have a question about one of the things that I saw along, and it was about that, the odor. And. It said that, I don't know where I saw it, but that they were worried about a police and not worried about, it was in here, employees but not worried about the public. This was, I thought was kind of, and I didn't know if that was new information or old information. Uh, dealing with the, the odor and that.
Let me see. It might have been in his.
Oh, yeah, here it is. The new condition number eight, so requires that the landfill manages dust, odor, and litter, but it clarifies that the landfill's responsibilities concern only those parties it has direct influence on, such as employees, agents, and subcontractors. So I, that was, I didn't, I didn't.
Let me look and.
I didn't understand, and that was in the condition of approval number ten, transport.
Yeah, let's see what it said before.
Because I still thought they should be responsible to the general public.
The previous language said permit shall conduct its operation, including without limitation, managing all transportation to and from the site by any mode of transport and from any point of origination in the manner required by applicable law, so as not to create a nuisance or otherwise generate, generate complaints verified by the planning department of odors, litter, dust, debris, mud, leakage, and other negative impacts to the public or adjacent lands. Notwithstanding anything herein to the contrary, all vehicles, trailers, and other forms of transportation utilizing public roadways must be covered on both inbound and outbound trips to the site. In discussion, so what, that kind of covers two things. It would cover, you know, obviously the trucks that are going to and from, and any subcontractors or those sorts of things that they may have, the, the waste management operations. And then the other thing would be folks that are transporting their own personal garbage or debris to the site. And waste management, where this talked about transport, it's hard, well, I mean, not only hard to regulate, but also a little unfair to regulate if, if Bob is driving to the landfill and he's leaking, is that waste management's problem, or is that Bob's problem? So I think the idea was to clean that language up, so that way it wasn't, it was more clear that it wasn't Bob and it was their subcontractors.
Okay.
Contractors of the cycle.
Right, right. So does that, does that take into, does that include gondolas that have coming, that are coming into the site uncovered?
Um, I, I would assume that that would be any subcontractor or employees or agents on the train. Yeah, so.
So that gondolas come in on the train, and they're the, you know, the dirty dirt most of the time, and they're supposed to be covered, I mean, they say they're covered, but they're coming in most of the time uncovered. Now, what I, and I do know that there is something that they spray on top of them to contain them, and maybe that is okay? I don't know the answer to that.
So I think that's a really good question for the applicant, because I don't know what their agreement is with their rail transporter, so I think that we want to make sure that they're covered under subcontractor or agent.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, I, I understand what, and I don't disagree with that. Yeah, but I also think though they, that as somebody who drives by there all the time, that, that landfill also needs to maintain dust for the general public that are out on the road and that kind of thing, so.
Yes.
I don't.
Yeah, so.
I don't think this, I don't think it should preclude their responsibilities to keep the roads as clean as they can.
Right. From their site.
Job, right.
Yeah.
You know, and I understand it's, it's very costly, but you know, it gets pretty icky after a rainstorm out there on Cedar Spring.
I, I think we should probably hold for.
Okay.
Public testimony, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I'm just looking to make sure if there's a, I thought somewhere in here it talked about the dust, dirt, and debris from the site.
Well, that's where it says the landfill managed dust, odor, and litter, so, but that could be part of.
Oh, generated by their operations. I mean, we could propose that they include operations and onsite if we wanted to really kind of.
Yeah, well, managed dust, odor, and litter generated by the permit's operations. Well, I mean, that's, I think that, I mean, that covers it right there, and I think what we've found is that it's, it's a really big job.
Yeah.
So. Okay.
I'll let you guys mull on that if you think of something that maybe we might want to.
Well, I think that's part of, I mean, and that's, I mean, that includes the railroad, rail.
Yes.
So.
Yeah. And then the, the next part does talk about the rail yard, but I don't think it specifically calls any of those out, so that they would. They must be operated consistent with their DEQ permit. Okay. So technology and practices, that next portion, it was modified. And, let's see, I'm trying to remember exactly. I think it was just a language modification. I don't believe that there was anything. A substance that changed there. The DEQ, and then the permit. Okay. Oh, so the modification on that one, so under subsection double I down below, so it, the permit is presently permitted for converting renewable landfill gas to energy is an accessory use. And it did go on to say some details about their energy conversion, and if it required expansion to notify the planning department in writing. That portion of it was removed at the request of the applicant, because it is a, a separate thing, and then where it was converting, the, had the capacity limitations listed in this one, the applicant felt as though that would be better under the other conditional use permit versus this one.
Under the host fee agreement.
Under the conditional use permit for the.
Oh, gas plant.
Gas plant, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and then uh, there was language about their conditional use permit for the compost that was issued in two thousand eighteen, and they proposed that that portion be removed also because it was a separate conditional use permit. And the last thing that they proposed a modification to was their facility site plan, and they, they removed that and added that as exhibit nine, so it, it previously said that they'll provide an updated site master plan for facilities, including all their leased areas on or before July one of each calendar year, highlighting any changes from the previous year. And so that was basically kind of wrapped up into their operations and then part of their update that they would provide by July thirty-first. I think that covers the substance of anything, and if I forgot anything, hopefully the, the applicant can mention that.
Steph, I, I would just share that I would ask you to clarify that this one here, double I, is it duplicative to six?
So.
And, and maybe the applicant can respond to that as well, but um, I just, I'm looking at that, and if it's converting renewable landfill gas to energy, including pipeline injection, is that a part of six, which is converting renewable landfill gas to energy which is permitted as accessory use?
Oh, right.
I wonder if they meant to put that as the plasma, so we have, there's two. Well, so, may, I think we should ask the application, applicant for some clarification, because I have the conditional use permit for composting in two thousand eighteen, their two thousand eight landfill gas to energy facility, and then they have the plasma gasification facility in two thousand fifteen, and I don't understand the technology well enough to know whether or not those are separate. So we may need to clean that up.
Let me know if you want me to continue sharing, or if you want something else up, or if you want me to just take it down to the screen.
Um, I think maybe, well, if you can just leave that up for a minute. And that concludes the staff report and the findings, so if you guys have any questions or any other commentary on this before we go into testimony.
For me, it would have been very helpful to have seen the original versus what the new proposals would have been, cause I'm a very visual individual, and it would have been very helpful for me to categorize.
Yeah, so I'm.
What, what, what the changes or not changed.
So just before this in the large packet, I'm sorry you guys didn't get it, maybe Carla can scroll up just a little bit, immediately proceeding this, about three pages up, Carla, if you can scroll. Did we lose her? Oh, there. Um, so the top of this document, so the applicant outlined the changes.
Yeah, we saw those, but it was, it was, it was pretty, oh, well, maybe we didn't see that.
Yeah, so.
Did I see that?
No.
This should have been part of the large packet, so that's kind of what I was going off of to tell you what the changes were. Um, and then just before this one. Um, and then just before this one. This is the previous order, these were all the previous conditions of approval. Yep, that's it, that was the beginning of it, Carla.
Okay.
I'm wondering if that large document.
Well, this is the one, this is the last one you sent, cause I didn't print the first one, I printed the second one. The applicant's exhibit one.
Yep.
Is what it was. And so that's this one here.
Well, and the one document was so, I mean, it was.
It was twenty pages.
I, I think it might be more than twenty, see.
Right, well, yeah, clearly, because we didn't get the last.
This is.
Yeah.
This is all of it and it has all the maps and everything in there, so.
Either. We got one map.
Which was the one that was missed that I sent yesterday?
Oh, right, yeah.
That's, I'm wondering if there was some email limitations, if maybe it wasn't accepting it.
Well.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then if it changes, whatever system needs to happen, but.
Yeah. It was a fair amount of information, that's why I was trying to send them in separate emails. So I'll just kind of point out what then was in the, the, the longer attachment and, um, I'm just gonna hold it up over here, Carla. It's just some, the assessor's map that identified the area. And then the applicant provided an ownership map. Um, that showed where their ownership was, the subject property. And then they did an aerial. Map of the landfill. That provided some information about, um, their, their hundred and fifty foot buffer showing where that would be. And then, uh, hazards and topography map was included. I'm showing the floodplain and any county roads and, um, nearby rivers. And then. They provided a soils map. And. A zoning map. Uh, the ownership map, um, and this one lines out, uh. The CWM over the Northwest, Oregon Waste Systems, Waste Systems, and then Union Pacific Railroad, so each of them individually. The one that you got separately yesterday, so you guys have seen that one. And then, um. The Columbia Ridge landfill lot legality reference map was included as well. And then their technical memorandum and that one outlined the, um. The previous approval and then what we were proposing as changes.
Okay, this, um, okay, so, uh, let's go back to. To. Uh, is there any, okay, so you showed the correspondence, are any additional correspondence beyond, beyond those items included in the staff report?
From the notice that was sent out, we didn't receive any additional correspondence from any adjoining property owners or agencies.
Okay. Okay, uh, the applicant may now present any testimony it may have. Yes. Please.
Okay. Jim, do you want me to go first to give a little spiel here, or do you wanna? Okay.
Carla, can you stop screen sharing for a little while and then we'll do the public testimony?
I, I think this is gonna be joint discussion anyway between Jim and ourselves, but, uh, hi, my name is Nathan Emerson, I'm a planner at CSA Planning. And located at forty-four ninety-seven Brown Ridge Terrace in Medford, Oregon, um, here with Jim Denson, who you have already chatted with a little bit. From Oregon Waste Systems, um, and Jay Harland, also the president of CSA Planning. Um, so, yeah, I was trying to take notes to catch up on the questions, uh, there are. You know, definitely some changes in the conditions of approval. I actually tried a red line, it got real messy and confusing. When you start combining all the, the things under condition eight, which is the operations. Um, but to clarify a few things and then we can, we could talk about them as we go along. The July thirty first thing I think was actually something that we proposed, so I don't think that was from the county court, I think we put it in there. Kind of as a placeholder, if that number doesn't work for Jim or you guys, I don't think there's any intention to, to lock that into place. Um, the odor piece, uh, we were, I think. Really that the intention was to clarify that the general public is not under the control of waste management, so if there need to be modifications to that condition. Um, I, I don't think there's any, you know. Any problem with that, we just want to make sure that, you know, that it continues to operate. As is with the provider that, you know, waste management is not responsible if the general public comes, gets turned away and then litters. Somewhere else down the road because they weren't able to drop their load because it wasn't covered or, or, or used properly, then that's not there on them at that point. Um, the technologies thing, uh. For the very last condition. It's section VI, uh, that one is referenced to the new renewable gas facility. Which is, was approved by the county and I, I think there's some findings in the exhibit one. And I will find that for a second. But it was approved by the county in twenty. Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yeah.
Yeah, twenty twenty-four. And so, uh, we just want to include that approval in there, it's not duplicative, the language is confusing, so if we need to change it and make it clearer, that, that makes sense. But it is a separate facility that got built in the last, or is being built, I think now, and Jim can tell you more about that. But it was approved in twenty twenty-four by the county and it's for a renewable gas facility, and I think also for, uh, CO2. Well, that Jim could probably explain better than I could ever. Even after studying it for a long time.
That's for section, that's for number six?
That is for, yes, for section six of condition, proposed condition eight.
Right, okay, under D.
Yeah.
And D two then is the, uh, renewable gas.
Yeah, it's, I.
Different than the gas plant.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the gas to energy, right, so. Where they're generating energy onsite, I think, although Jim, please speak up if that's wrong.
Yeah.
Is this one?
Yeah.
You're good, okay. Uh, I, I think in the context of what you're seeing in that last section eight. There was a section in CUP that kind of went over all the historical approvals.
Right.
The outside of the five-year renewals, right, so we would. Um, when we built the engine plant, we had to go to the county. Get approval through the CUP, get it added to the CUP, so it was author issues. So that list, and I, and I think we, we talked about it in the end, it, it's confusing. Because it's not. It's really a list of things that have been approved.
Right.
At that, it's, it's not. What we can do or what, it, it's stuff that's already been approved in history, right? Um, so there are two plants, uh, one is. Landfill gas to energy, that's the engines that run that create electricity. Uh, the other one is the RNG which doesn't create electricity, it, it just creates natural gas and puts it in the pipeline. So they're really two separate units, um. I don't. But I mean, ultimately, I think. I think we can maybe. Offer to rewrite that better, so it's, it's more of. Chronology of the history of. What was approved, right? Um. But that, that's, that's kind of how it was intended, um. The reason we didn't give you a red line because it would drive the math.
They can show you what it looks like.
It essentially what we did is we took three different agreements, right? And we separated the land use stuff into what you're looking at now. And a lot of the provisions like litter, dust, odor and all those other things. Have been moved to the other two agreements, right, the host fee and the, and the road use agreement. All of this stuff is still there, it's just in a, in a separate agreement that's not, right? It's, it's between county and, and waste management, so, um. But we, we're very careful to make sure when we pulled something out that it went into the host fee agreement. Because it, a lot of the things that, um, were removed were not land use states. And there was some concern that whether or not it would be enforceable or not, right? So what, what we did in the CUP was essentially saying. Waste management will follow their permits. Instead of. Outlining everything that, that happens, you know, odor, dust, litter and all that, we just, we're saying that. We have permits to, to operate and we have to follow those permits.
Yeah, I mean, the, the changes from a land use standpoint, right, we're trying to, to narrow the scope of the conditional approval to things that are associated with actual land use. On the site and the conditional use permit, and then take all the other stuff and, you know, make sure it's streamlined.
Wait, waste management still has obligations to, to meet the needs of the, of the public and the surrounding.
Yeah, yes.
People, so, I, I, I'm not sure that, that. I mean, it, it appears that it's still, that you've left some of that, the odor, the litter into the conditional use permit. Because I'm, I'm not so, I don't believe it should come out of the conditional permit.
Yeah, in the conditional use permit, we said. All these things we have to follow our permits, we have to, uh, adhere to our permit. In the host fee agreement, there's a little more detail, right, how far we're gonna clean up from what, from what to where and. You know, all those kinds of things, so, um.
So it becomes a matter of rather than meeting the needs of the planning commission, you're meeting the needs of the court.
Of the court and the public.
Yeah.
Right, um.
Well, there, the court becomes the, the, uh, they're the ones who, who say.
But we don't want. Not with, um, I think not, none of us want. The county court or the planning commission regulating the landfill, there's.
Right, right, and, and we. It's like, nobody wants to do that either.
Yeah, exactly, so, we tried to streamline it a little bit, this one is probably the hardest one that you're gonna see from us. Because there was so much in the CUP that was not land use. That we just really needed to get separated and, and start fresh, if you will.
Yeah, and if you, if you want examples of that, the stuff around the Seattle Metro contracts, for example, was in the conditional use per, permit before. And that's not really tied to land use in any way, shape or form, and my understanding now is that's going to the, the host fee agreement. Yeah, where it's more appropriate.
Yeah, I don't disagree that with, with any of that from, from my own personal point of view, but I, I do think there are some things from, that. I don't, you know, that don't, that still need to perhaps stay in the conditional use as well, because I think it's part of, of the land use.
Yeah, and we, we tried to leave those things in, right, and, but just clarify the instances where. The specifics of exactly how it's done will be done either in the DQ, DQ permit. Or in the host fee agreement, or a lot, potentially both, right, so we tried to clarify that, and then we also tried to clarify. You know, create some distinction for the things that are. General public caused on the roadway system, where really all waste management can do is tell somebody. Hey, we have standards for bringing stuff to the, to the landfill, it doesn't, um, you're not doing it right and you need to go away and come back. I use the D word.
D word.
Yeah. So from Montana, like, that's.
So, were there other questions?
I do not, um, I guess, uh. Uh, perhaps what I wouldn't mind seeing is this number eight seems to be the one that, where a lot of stuff got pushed into this number eight. Um, and I don't know how big it is, land use operations and practices.
Nathan, you wanna go through them one by one?
Yeah, I, I would like to, or else maybe somebody, I mean.
I think Carla can pull them back up so we can see them, so, yeah, this is not something we.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you pull them up and Nathan, why don't you go through the thinking one by one?
Because number. Number eight seems to be where a lot of things landed.
Yes, for sure.
Where the history landed.
Right.
And some of the operational practice, right.
That, yeah, the basic operational that. Page three. Yeah, three, where it is. Of exhibit A. Yeah, there it is, okay.
Yeah, there you go. Um, yeah, so let's see here. Let me bring up my. So, okay, so for subsection A. Let me know if you have any questions, but subsection A used to be its own separate requirement that they have to keep DQ permits, um, it felt like that was. Related directly to landfill operations practices, so we combined it into this one. Um, let's see here, the B, the landfill that managed dust, so there were separate, uh, conditions around that. And. If, it felt like, it made sense for everything where you're looking at the landfill where, you, you know, where it's related directly to the. These types of impacts that are going offsite, it made more sense to put it here, where it's directly related to the stuff that's happening. Um, so there's still a requirement that. The landfill operate and manage all these items, uh, you know. And if there's questions about whether that applies to offsite or onsite, I'm sure we can, we can change the language and make it clear to you guys. But, you know, that, that was a separate item as well. Uh, C, the rail yard was its own separate item and, you know, these all feel very intertwined together. So, uh, we thought it would make more sense to put it under landfill operations, um, let's see here. And I'm sure it's very exciting to listen to me talk through these changes as I try and scroll and find them here.
What I will say is previously landfill operation said the permittee must obtain and keep current all applicable permits and approvals from. Department of Environmental Quality and other applicable agencies and operate the landfill in accordance with such permits and approvals.
That was the end of it.
Yeah.
This is much more detailed instead of.
Yeah. That's why I mean, things have landed, things have moved into this, yeah, other areas that still feels like thinking.
The main thing Nathan did was make a heading that captures all the running of the landfill. And regulating of the running of the landfill and then put them all under landfill operations and practices. Which I can tell you, uh, when you go down the line and, and Stephanie or Carla are doing some sort of, um. Uh. Like administration of the, of the CUP, this is more typical of the, how a. Um, how conditions are organized, so the topic, the main topic kind of has then all the subsections, so it's a little easier to find. So in a lot of ways, it's just sort of, um. I would say making it a little more standard rather than just a laundry list that goes from one thing to the next and skips back and forth between completely different topics.
And I'm, and I'm assuming that this is how it's been and how it's been, is being managed or changed in, in other locations.
Yeah, yeah, this is pretty typical for not just landfills, but all kinds of different conditions of approval, this is more standard than the skipping back and forth from.
Yeah.
Between sort of unrelated items in a laundry list form.
Right, instead of going from number thirteen litter control to. Fifteen railroad operations down further, a couple more pages to technology, like it's all just combined. So that was, that was really the intention.
Well, and that, that's really from the history of the site, been here a long time and things have been added and it's kind of been, well. We'll put that in a new heading, right, and it's just been kind of, it's very choppy and hard to, to understand and read that. That's.
Well, that was why it was just, why, it was the, the CUP included the host fees with.
Yep.
Agreement which.
Right.
Yeah.
Originally, when it was put together back in, you know, nineteen, you know, eighty.
Many.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would say what Jim is saying is quite common to you on a site that. That's operational like this and goes on for a long time, right? That, it might have been organized at the beginning and then the next sort of over time, what you end up with is chronological adding of conditions, right? But then they just skip from topic to topic, and when it comes to, to the, you know. The landfill showing compliance with conditions and the, and the staff having to administrate it, that's, it, it's, it's a, you know. It's easy to miss something is the best way to put it, right, like where is this thing, right? We tried to make it so that it's more logic rather than when something happened.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, uh, yeah, what's, what's below D? Okay, that's, this is where those all dropped into, yeah. That we saw before, the uses technologies, et cetera. Yeah.
Those are all the historical.
Right.
So, yeah, gone through. And it, it, it's important to note that. We have these historical things and they're approved, but if we want to do something else. It's just like any other company, we have to. It's just like any other company. We have to come to you guys to modify the CUP, right? We have to go planning director first. Go through the CUP process, those kinds of things.
Yeah, and this doesn't change any of those approval processes. This doesn't propose any uses, doesn't change. You know, the fact that they have to come back to the county for approval of anything new out there.
I agree, Nathan. And the other thing that it does too, that I would say is with this logical structure, right? Like. If there's a CUP amendment and maybe one one thing that was there has been replaced, right? I think. It makes it easier to do an amendment to the conditions where, okay, this thing is gone now. So it this condition is being deleted and now we're doing this thing. And now we're going to make one below it and put the file number for that. And then it's. Sort of logical for the staff to understand what's going on and the planning commission when it comes back for them.
And I'm comparing what they have there with the previous order in two thousand and twenty. And it's a duplicate and then they've added. The the new one at the end. So that's the only change that I've seen.
Where we may have fused things is in two.
Two and six.
We said including pipeline injection.
So so we need to to fix the.
So. We either need to beef up two. Or take and take one away or or the other word. I don't know, Jay, the.
Oh, I guess I do see the one difference that was in two before. What has been removed is that capacity of the forty six sixty five CFM. And then the one before did say that it was the landfill gas to energy facility. The LFGT.
Yes, I I think the pipeline injection. There was at some point in the long time we sort of rewrite this thing. That we put that in there, not. Meaning to put six, but when we ended up. Reading it, wanted to make sure everything that had been previously approved was in that list. So there was no question. So that that's just a.
I I do think we need to clear it up just a little bit. Yep, to the two and six. Otherwise, that language is the same.
Considering the extent of the re the the re restructuring, I think that that feels like an easy lift.
Well, so, but here's my question. So do we need, can we fix the the language? Right now in order to approve it?
Would you take up including the pipeline injection?
Or I think, I don't know if Nathan has the previous document open. But previously, so two, it says. Permit is presently permitted for converting renewable landfill gas to energy, which is permitted as an accessory use in. To the conditional use permit. And then it says. The the conversion capacity of forty six sixty five CFM. If at any time it exceeds it. The permitting must notify the planning department in writing, which that part we've. We've captured under the other.
Actually, that's been removed. It all transpired because. About amount of gas that we produce varies day by day. So and there should not be any reason why waste management needs to notify the camera and lift.
Oh, right. Yep, we did talk about that.
That is what it is, but.
And then it just says. It does call it the landfill gas to energy facility in that one. So I don't know if we just need to rename that. So it's the landfill gas to energy facility, the LFGTE.
So does, this is Carla. Does two have a CUP number attached to it? And maybe that would help clarify the confusion.
It needs that, yes, it does. I don't know what it is, to be honest with you, but it it does have a CUP number.
Twenty third, two thousand and eight, unanimous vote by county court.
But that's 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 talking about the unanimous vote by county court is on number six.
Right, because there's no, there's no CUP. I mean, there's a CUP number identified in number six, but it's. It it's highlighted because it's missing. So I I think it would be helpful if the CUP numbers were included in each. Because that in itself would be a delineator between the differences between two and six. And then for going back to the historical context, would there be a way to put one through six in historical order? That might also be helpful from the perspective of the history.
Yeah. Right, I I see that that makes sense, Carla, because right, when you look at it, you can see it's jumping kind of around.
Yeah.
So it's history that I have on here for that approval in two thousand and eight. It says, it just says it's shall coincide with the five year review of the existing CUP. Was it during the modification? So was it the same CUP? Do you remember?
That seems to be what it's suggesting, that it was part of a five year renewal.
Yeah, that's what I.
That's what it was.
So I think. Landed under this CUP.
I think that's right.
So if that's the case, then this CUP. When you get to the very top of the CUP, the conditions, your staff report, it should, if it's, if it was incorporated. Under that the original CUP as part of a modification and wasn't a standalone CUP. Then it's probably not correct in this list and should be identified as part of the. The major CUP.
Carla, what do you? I think we could put the number in the parenthetical and then with. Like a dash that says part of the, you know, that CUP. Renewal cycle.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that's, I think that would work as well. I just think we need some way to. Acknowledge that the base CUP was amended. To allow this activity. The rest of these all identify standalone CUPs that have some correlation to the facility.
I think one of the issues we run into with this is sometimes. During the five year review, it got a new CUP number and other times it didn't.
That's probably true.
So and then each time it got, since they started doing it at county court, it gets a new order number.
But the CUP doesn't remain the same? Why?
Things that during the next review, I think it maintains this CUP. So I I think that might be part of the problem in finding some of. That is that it, this conditional use permit has had so many different conditional use permit numbers and so many different order numbers.
So many iterations, yeah.
Yeah, and just to add one thing, I don't, number six on there, I don't think was actually the CUP. I think it was a site plan review. So I think that's a separate. Number probably needs to be fixed too. It's twenty twenty four ZPO three, Jim provided that to me.
So, number six is, okay. There you go. One twenty four oh three.
Yeah, I think twenty twenty four is, I I have the ZP. I don't know if it's supposed to be SP. I might have.
They were giving it a ZP number, I think. But I am curious about that now, looking at it, because. Should the received unanimous vote by county court be on there? Was that a county court decision?
I think it was a, I don't think so, but. So I think that is needs to be fixed and just reference the the approval number.
I didn't see that when I was looking.
But I don't think it came in front of the planning commission either. Did it, twenty twenty four?
Yes.
I don't recall that.
It was before Boardman took contract, so I don't know.
Oh, you mean the the last RG? No, that did not come before the plan. Because it wasn't a CUP.
Right.
Change. Yeah, it it was. Through site plan.
Right, yeah. Right, that's that's why.
Not that I'm not a little running out of things.
Yeah, that's why.
So I do think that that language needs to be cleaned up on six. The other thing, so the plasma gasification facility was in the previous one. I don't know if that wants. If we want to leave that referenced or not.
Want that removed because we no longer have any authority of that.
Okay, so that is the one change.
Was that an attack? You're wrong.
So that is the one thing that is different, that that was referenced from the previous one.
For that to be, when it was writ, when this one was written, they were a part of waste management. And now they're. We don't want them in our CUP.
But they have a separate CUP done for them as well in the beginning. For an attack, wasn't there?
Well, there is a CUP number identified here, but it is referenced in there. So. I'd have to go back and look and see if that was part of, it it would coincide with the five year review.
Yeah, I'm sure there was a separate CUP for in at the time. But it was, it was a number of years ago.
So. Okay. So I think if that covers everything, we can move on with the rest of public testimony.
Chair asked if we could make the change.
Right, so I think as long as, can we come up with some some language to change that to? For two and six.
Yes, and and we can reorder chronologically.
Reorder chronologically, simple. Okay, so reordering chronologically and then changing to. To. Call out that it is the landfill gas to energy facility.
Which one, number six or number two?
Number two.
Two, yep.
And then six. Help me with some language there because you guys know this better than. The new facility.
We have a approval there in straight meeting number.
Yeah, the ZP approval.
Yeah.
So if we just add the ZP number, whatever.
Well, and that wouldn't have been a. Right.
That's probably irrelevant.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Well, and it, yeah, so so it is a renewable gas, natural gas and carbon sequestration facility. Okay, so we remove that portion where it says. Unanimous vote by county court. And with the number in referencing.
Landfill gas to energy facility period. Strike out, including pipeline injection, which is maybe the rest is. That makes sense, Nathan and Jake.
Yes.
Yep.
And then we just scratch out unanimous vote by town court.
Yep.
Says.
The ZP number.
Yep. And I think that would clean that up, so it is separate.
And Jim, are you speaking in favor of the application basically? If you have anything else that you would like to add at this point?
You're going to answer questions again.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wish to speak against the application? Hearing none? Anyone wish to, does anyone have neutral testimony? Hearing none?
I saw somebody.
Somebody? Oh, that's, okay.
Thank you. Chair Michael and members of the commission, my name is Les Ruerka, one, two, eight, 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 Lower Rock Creek Lane. Arlington, actually Rock Creek for the record of it. And I would just simply like to ask that the record of tonight's proceedings reflect my attendance via the remote connection. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Stephanie will make a note of that. Thank you. Any other neutral testimony? Hearing none? Do we have any, we don't have anything to rebut? And the public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Gavel. Okay, whatever. There's actually a gavel. I sort of buried it because it was like, yeah. Okay, does staff need to respond to a question or issue raised? Do you have anything?
Nope, we didn't receive any other testimony.
Yeah, now, it's an opportunity for more questions. If we have any more questions. Essentially, this, as I understand it, this is an opportunity to. Turn the land use document, or the conditional use permit into a conditional use permit, a host fees agreement and a road agreement. So removing out of this conditional use permit that language. That really doesn't affect the land use and move it into the host fees. That's, that's what, that's that's essentially the crux of of what we're doing today, tonight.
If I may, the. The host fee and the road use agreement are one now.
One document. So we're moving to. It's all part of the.
Via the county.
Yeah.
All via the county, correct.
And so to be clear, what they've done historically is all of this would then be a recommendation to the county court. Which the county court would then approve all as one package. What we're proposing tonight is that this would move on as a recommendation because the the two thousand and twenty order said that that it had to be reviewed this year. However, when the county court makes a decision on it. Staff anticipates that this portion would come for review only at the planning commission next time.
Right.
And that you would approve, deny or modify without referral to the county court. So at this time, the notice has been placed for the November fifth county court hearing. So that way it can be, right, November fifth, I think, is Wednesday. I just want to double check that. Okay, so that November fifth hearing where they would make a final decision on this. And then they can do the host fee agreement and road use agreement as one document as a separate thing. So just to be clear on that. Also, bringing the process back into line where it should be.
Okay. Any other questions? Matt? Aaron? No. Okay. Your motion?
I did put some suggested you have options.
To recommend to the county court the changes outlined by the commission of waste management this evening, reflecting the changes that we chatted about. For for the conditional use permit. Twenty twenty five dash fourteen.
Okay. Okay, and we have second.
Second.
So. Let's call for the vote. Matt?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Marta?
Aye.
Okay. Aye. Favor, all passed.
And so we can close the hearing. And move on. We get on anyway. The hearing is officially closed and now we'll just move on to any old business or new business. And thank you for coming. We appreciate your time and for the gentleman online, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Les.
Thanks.
And you're welcome to stay. I'm not sure what other information we have going on, but we have old business and new business.
So we don't really have any old business to cover. I'm not aware of any other new business at this time. Really, a lot of this has consumed a lot of the last month since we last saw each other. So I've been working diligently on this. We do have several. Type two decisions, which were joining property owner notices for met towers. I think there was something like nine, if I remember correctly. Throughout that, five of them are still currently out for comment. And. That about covers it. As far as staff, I did attend a conference last week. The AOC, or I'm sorry, the. The OAPA Oregon Association of Planners Conference. This year, the Western Planners also came and learned a lot of really. and learn a lot of really great information, uh, about a portion of it. I went to a session about airports, which there's not a whole lot that's changing around our airport, but, um, I figured it would be good to have that information and then um, there was a session about data centers. I think they titled it data centers coming to a town near you. Although there isn't any, uh, data center proposed within our jurisdiction specifically, I'm sure we will feel some effects as we may have already, um, in the unincorporated areas from, uh, what may be coming to Arlington. Um, and then some, uh, information about energy, so, uh, you know, Gillum County is the, the hotspot for renewable energy, so, um. Next month, uh, is the AOC Conference Association of Oregon Counties. I'm sure there's plenty of, uh, staff from the county that will be attending that as well. They do have a couple of days of our planners group. There are some sessions that are directly related to planning and uh, we'll be discussing some legislative updates during that as well, so. Um, as I said, next week we'll be at county court for the hearing for this and, uh.
Is that in Arlington or Condon?
That one's in Condon. And the county court, uh, I think that's their only meeting. Yes, that's the only meeting in November and then December we'll have a couple of meetings. So through the holidays, it does get kinda light for the county court agendas, so. Um, I don't have any other updates. Just been.
Steph, can I, can I, can I jump in and share just a little bit? Chair, chair, can I jump in and share just a little bit?
Absolutely.
So. So I, I just wanna take a little bit of heat for, um, the, uh, bifurcation of the agreement uh, that you guys all discussed tonight. Um, having been the planning director in Moro County for eighteen years, uh, we have a landfill, have a landfill in Moro County as well. And it is, it's the competitor, uh, so it's waste connections, not waste management, but, um, Moro County actually adopted, had an, uh, uh, like when the landfill went in in Moro County, the county adopted a fairly simple solid waste management plan and ordinance. And during my time at the county, probably in the two thousand seven to two thousand and nine era, we updated that solid waste management plan and the implementing ordinance. Uh, we, I did a little digging and I asked a lot of questions from new county staff, and there's been a lot of turnover at Moro County. Um, but we actually found the original, um, that two thousand, that late two thousands, um, document. And we've provided that to the judge, and, um, my recommendation to the judge was to seriously consider looking at solid waste in a more holistic way. Um, because right now the focus is on a single entity and a single operation. But there are a lot of solid waste considerations that come from a lot of different places. Um, and even within your current development code, some of those um, instances that could, you know, such as a natural disaster, um, that could create additional debris and how do you manage that and, and what are those, um, implications? Um, if the county were to, let's just say for some reason the county decided, or one of your cities outside of the city's jurisdiction, like in the UGB, or, um, in the county to support that community wanted to put a recycling station in, that maybe isn't waste connect, a waste management. I mean, that may not ever happen. But, um, a solid waste management plan would give you, um, the opportunity to deal with a lot of those other potential solid waste issues, and I can't remember all of them off the top of my head, but I, I guess I wanna, I, I, I wanted to let you know that when I, when Stephanie shared the first CUP with me, I kinda went, OMG, I mean, it was just so broad. And what I want you to really take away from this evening's discussion about this is that you actually have more authority going forward over the CUP than you currently do now. Because what should be your decision-making authority, because the CUP is a quasi-judicial decision, has been removed from you because it's been incorporated with all of those other things, and it moves on to the county, to the county court. So it was really a process where we looked at it and said, who has financial responsibility within the county? And then who has land use authority within the county? And between you and the planning director, that's where land use authority is vested for quasi, for quasi-judicial decisions. And, and I, I hope you can see it that way, that part of my objective was to make sure that your decision-making was made whole, because it's actually been undercut in the past process. You, you're giving up some ability to review some other aspects, but you are gaining clear authority under your development code to issue a conditional use permit, which is in the purview of the, of the planning commission under your development code and as a quasi-judicial decision. So I, I, I hope you can walk away from this understanding kind of, you know, I think the conversation that Stephanie and I had, the conversation we had with the judge, the conversation that we had um, with the applicant as well. And it's kind of interesting cuz they, they kind of um, teed up that conversation to some degree and were asking some questions about um, splitting or bifurcating, um, that, that decision document, so. Um, i- if you wanna be frustrated with someone, I'll put the target on me.
Well, and, and it is important to note that at different times, I think the planning commission has wondered what is our role here, because our role has really felt like it's not really been in a, in a position of anything. So other than we make recommendations to the court and then they can do whatever they want, and so, sort of like, okay, why are we here?
Right. Yeah, and that recommendation role is clearly embedded when you're making a legislative change. So when, when somebody comes in, whether it be staff, the county court, the planning commission, or a landowner says, hey, can we change the text of the development code, or can we update this portion of the comprehensive plan? That's a legislative change, and in that instance, the court is clearly the final decision maker because you're creating law. But when you're implementing law, the decision authority, again, defined by your development code, is either vested with your planning director or with the planning commission. And so I, I think it's important that we clearly establish what your decision, decision-making authority is and put it back where it needs to be relative to the landfill operations under the land use purview. Now, I, I would also seriously recommend that as we begin to work through looking at the development code and what things maybe could change, are there things you'd wanna change about what the criteria are for citing a landfill? Now, again, we have a box we're in. It is a land use box. But within that land use box, does your criteria adequately address the things that should be protected under your land use planning authority? And if you think there's something missing, then that's the appropriate mechanism to make sure that the standards that are applied are the standards you think are right. And, and then, um, the next time there's a modification, the question would be, should those new and amended standards become applicable to, to the sea, to the landfill based on an amendment or a modification to the CUP? Now, if it's just simply the required five-year review, there may not be a trigger to apply new standards. But if they make a modification, those new standards would clearly be applicable. So i- it, again, I'm just, just a little bit of, you know, kinda planning one-on-one, what some of my thought processes were when we started looking at it, so. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Well, I think we know with waste management, if, if, you know, that there's certainly gonna be changes faster than every five years. Um, so, uh, it's reviewed more often than that, clearly, just because of the nature of what they're doing and um, leading-edge company, so, you know, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Carla, for your insight. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Hey, I have nothing else to provide if we wanted to go to just the general public comment unrelated to the hearing.
Yeah, do we have any public comment? Unrelated to the, uh, recent, uh, hearing?
Chair Michael?
Yes.
Again, Les Ruerka for the record, um, out by, or from Rock Creek. Um, I would just like to really, um, put on record my appreciation and thanks for both Carla and Stephanie's, um, comments here this evening, particularly Carla's. And, um, I, I just couldn't agree more, and I think it's important uh, going forward that the steps that you've initiated courtesy of the CUP this evening are actually, um, brought to fruitation, um. The, the planning commission needs to be, uh, taken much more seriously than it has over the course of the CUP that's been in existence for the company and, and I really think that you're on the right course. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Any other public comment? Hearing none? If the meeting can be, oh, yeah, next meeting?
So next meeting, there's a placeholder for November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Um, staff does not currently have an application that's been noticed for November. Uh, we do have uh, an application of sorts, um, and it is, um, it is not complete at this time, so, uh, at this time, it would actually probably be looking towards a December meeting, so. It's up to you whether or not we wanna meet in November, um, or, um, not.
Do you think it's gonna be ready for December?
I'm not sure. I, I had an email from the applicant on Monday. Uh, and I responded and I have, no, I'm sorry, not Monday. It was not yesterday, Monday, last Monday. And I responded and I haven't heard back, so I'm not sure.
What's your all thinking? You've been some weather, we're in football playoffs right now. As if we're in football players, we'll be here cuz we'll be in the championship. Or not, I would be joining remotely.
Might it be worth suggesting maybe an early January hearing date as opposed to a late December date for two reasons? Uh, allow them to get to completeness. Again, it would just be, um, a placeholder. Um, and then we avoid football playoffs and the holidays.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that, uh, we're pretty excited about football. Yeah. But I, I think that's, uh, more realistic.
We wanted to target an early January.
Carla, let's see.
Like the thirteenth?
What night? Yeah, the, I've got conflicts potentially. Well, the sixth will be city council, the thirteenth and twentieth might be the joint public hearing with, um, the city council and the board for the Parks Master Plan, so, uh, not that I need to be there, so don't, unless you think you want me to attend. I, I, until I know if it's the thirteenth or the twentieth for that joint meeting, I, I can't, yeah. But if you guys were willing to look at the thirteenth or the twen- although twentieth gets late enough, you might as well have it on the twenty-seventh at that point, so. Yeah. Again, Steph, I don't know if you think you need me. If you don't need me, then, then you, you could do the sixth. It's just, I can't attend cuz of city council.
At this time, I'm available any of those.
Me too.
Unless the basketball schedule changes. And the rest must definitely, but so far.
Um, so, I mean, we, I guess we don't necessarily have to target a date. You guys just wanna keep, want me to keep you in the loop as to what's happening with the application?
Sure.
If it looks like, uh, they're going to get there, then maybe we.
It's our year January, preferable.
Yeah.
Really?
Um, if, if they can get there, then, um, I'll, I'll make a note that January sixth or thirteenth, if it looks like they're gonna make it.
I'll put it for six for now. Is that why I have a placeholder?
Okay. Um.
Struggle with all that stuff.
So, and if, if they're not gonna make it, then I'll just give them the, the January twenty-seventh option, so. Um. Okay. And that would be it?
Okay, so we're putting in a January sixth placeholder, my notes. Five-thirty?
Yep.
Okay. Aaron, that. Um, the new year.